Okay, we're going to move back into the regular part of our meeting and we are at the approval of the minutes. Everybody's got a chance to review the last one spent and everybody's comfortable with those and I'm looking forward with a resolution on that. Being resolved, the Council of Towne Niqoah are now approved and entered into the regular meeting held in April 6, 2021. As certain events fall in favor.
They'll wait half an hour, forty minutes.
Okay. We.
They're out there waiting and just.
They are here.
Just needing to switch up.
So would we be allowed to do that if we have a resolution statement down below?
We're ready for you guys, so.
So welcome, we have the Western Manitoba Regional Library, some people here, so if you didn't want to introduce yourselves and.
All right.
And then the council of the gold and do it.
Yeah, the council of the gold.
Okay, we're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
We have this guy here.
I'll get, well, yeah, that's right, yeah.
We have our local librarian, this is Debbie Unger, Deborah Unger, and of course, we have our library director from the WMRL, Danielle Hubbard.
Awesome, thank you, Jason. This is a really rapid turnaround. Perfect, good. So thank you so much for having us. It's Jason just introduced me, my name is Danielle Hubbard and I'm the director of the Western Manitoba Regional Library. So this is supposed to be a fairly short and I think entirely painless presentation. As Debbie and I were standing in your little vestibule, we were saying, maybe we should lead out by saying, we're not asking you for anything. We're just here to introduce ourselves and talk about what is happening at the library and what we do as a community. So I will lead out by saying that, I'm sure you get a lot of presentations that are not like that, so. So what we're going to do is first, I'm just going to tell you about what the Western Manitoba Regional Library is, who we are, and what we do. I'm then going to talk about regional support, so that means what we as a region offer to the branch libraries that we are our member libraries. So Niqoah is one of the member libraries of the Western Manitoba Regional Library. And then I'm going to pass things over to Debbie, who works here in Niqoah, and so she will update you on what's happening locally at the Niqoah Public Library. And then we'll have a discussion or question and answer at the end. If anyone has any questions for us or thoughts for us, or anything you want to say to us before we go, then it'll be an opportunity again. You can also ask questions throughout, but I think if it's something longer and more involved, probably better to hold it to the end, just to, just so we get through, we'll get to say. Sorry, talking through a mask and projecting is a challenging combination.
You two are comfortable enough.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. So the Western Manitoba Regional Library, it's actually the second largest by population public library in Manitoba after the Winnipeg Public Library. So we're based in Brandon, two branches in Brandon, the downtown branch where central administration is located. And then we have a satellite branch in the southern suburbs of Brandon. And we also have rural branches in the town of Carberry that serves Carberry and the municipality of Los Angeles Langford. And we have a branch here in Niqoah and one in Glenboro and one in Hartley that serves the municipality of Rassland. So we serve six municipalities total and that's for a population of just over sixty-one thousand, so. In terms of number of branches, we're not the largest library in Manitoba, but population served after Winnipeg were the largest. And what makes a municipal a member of Western Manitoba Regional Library is that your municipal tax dollars support the library. So each of the municipal members support the library with a per capita levy of eleven, no, eleven dollars and twenty cents. So one of my goals for this year is to do what I'm doing tonight of going out and introducing myself to each of the councils. I've been the director for two years and until this year, I haven't done this yet, of introducing myself to each of the councils. And I think that that's valuable because you are supporting the library with your tax money and we are supporting your communities by providing library services. So as far as I'm aware, there aren't any frictions or any negative about the relationship between the Towne Niqoah Library, but I want to make sure that that remains the case and if you have any concerns, I gotta know about them, then pass them through in discontentment around this table. That's why I'm here, telling you these things. So the mission of the WMRL is to enrich lives and strengthen communities by providing universal access to broad and diverse collections of resources relevant and responsive to community needs. And if I was a little more prepared, I would have that whole sentence memorized, but that was good enough. So the role of public libraries is always changing, but certainly in the last ten or fifteen years, I'd say it's really undergoing a shift with the increased digitization of the world. So we still are a place that provides books, but we also provide a wide array of what we call e-resources as well. So that's access to ebooks and e-audio books. And those are all curated by the administrative staff who work in Brandon. So myself and our technical services librarian, we make the selections for these various resources that are listed on the side of the screen. So Hoopla and eLibraries Manitoba will provide access to ebooks and audiobooks. Sela provides access to people with print disabilities, so most largely older people who are losing their eyesight. Then Sela will actually mail books and other resources to their houses. Flipster provides access to magazines and Canopy is a movie streaming service. So every year, we're kind of on an ongoing basis, we evaluate what e-resources we're providing and get new ones and switch them out and kind of go by what seems to be best fit, so that's what we're providing right now. And then the second box there, when it says items, over a hundred and twenty items, those are physical items, so. Some of them are DVDs too, most of them are books. So Brandon houses about eighty percent of the collection, but then each of our rural branches has a chunk of books as well. And those get shared through the whole region. So if one of Debbie's patrons wants a book that's in Brandon, then we'll stick it in a mail bag and send it to Niqoah later that week. So another support that the region provides to all of our branches is technology. So again, that's something that's, it seems to be more and more complicated than expensive all the time. So we have a website and social media, each of the branches has their own local social media as well. So I know Debbie does a fantastic job of keeping this community informed with Facebook. But then we also have regional website, which actually Debbie's our webmaster, so like we wouldn't get very far without you. You're pretty intentional. What was that?
Job security.
Good job security, yeah, your job is quite secure. And we also provide public computer access in each of our branches. So that's something that's valuable to people who don't have access to their computers at home. Staffing is something that's kind of shared between the whole region. So each of our branches has a, what we call, branch supervisor or a local librarian. So again, Debbie's the branch supervisor for Niqoah, so she's the face of the WMRL, the face of the Niqoah Public Library. But to support Debbie, there's also a supervisor at each of our locations and we meet, used to meet in person, right now we're meeting over the phone or over Zoom or Teams every two weeks to check in and talk about how things are going. And then salary payments and benefits are handled in Brandon as well, so it is a regional system. So if you work in one of our other branches, then you're still an employee at the WMRL. Programming and outreach is one of, that's one of the priorities of the library that has become a lot more complicated over the past year and a few months. So pre-COVID, we used to offer in-person book clubs, science programs, that's what the image on the right there is kids doing a science Saturday program. I think they're building constellations, although not quite sure. And we were running a host of other programs as well, including a summer reading club. So for the summer, kids would come pouring into all the branches and they'd do storytimes and games and get prizes for reading books. So right now, we're still offering some adjusted version of those programs that are organized primarily by our programming and outreach librarian, whose name is Lee, who works closely with me. And we're kind of experimenting with all of this and hoping that one day it'll go back to normal where we can see people in person. But for the time being, at least, we're still providing book clubs and writing groups virtually. And then I'm going to turn things over to Debbie, it looks like. Do you want to do a seat swap or do you want me to?
No, no, I'm just, it's just the one, that's.
Okay.
Okay, so. I'm Debbie Unger and I have been branch supervisor in Niqoah for about six years. And a few things have changed since I started and, but one thing that hasn't changed is we do a lot of outreach where we can. And the most important thing we do is the senior building outreach. We deliver books to Elks Manor and Kids of the Courts once a month. And those people, frankly, would be lost without it because they're heavy readers and they can't read good things. It's, it makes us feel really good that we're able to do something special for our seniors. And we also have a lot, a few people in town who will choose not to leave their homes or they can't leave their homes, so we do deliveries for them as well. And it's really just, it's simple, they fold a certain amount of books, we pick something and drop it off for them. And so it feels good to be able to do that kind of thing for the Niqoah citizens. And some people also are really not comfortable with going out right now and so they call us, they have time, we check out books to them. And then they need to pop in, grab their books and hang out. So we try to do as possible as we can to meet people's needs right now and we found that it's developed some really good relationships. And one of the other big programs that we do every year at the library is we're a drop-off point for the volunteering contact program. And that's sponsored by Very Mountain Home. They organize the whole thing, they get the volunteers, all we do is collect the returns and give them to the volunteer to be processed. And they do all the work and submit them online. And it's for people who spend accounts in low income groups and it's a really valuable program, so we're glad that we could offer it again this year. Last year it was difficult because we wanted to be closed, because we couldn't maintain the confidentiality. So this year we were able to provide it again, which was really nice. And as Danielle was saying, we do have the public computers and we offer printing and free wifi, which is really great access for a lot of people that, especially at this time of year, people are coming in, they need print receipts, they need to print legal documents for their contact filings or for a lot of our new residents, they need a lot of documents printed to submit for permanent residency. And not everyone else is bothered with a printer because we don't know that they run out of ink for a moment, so. It's, it's nice that we can offer that kind of printing service. And we do have people who do not have library cards because either they don't want one or they live outside of the tax catchment area and it's difficult for them to afford a library card. So what we do is we have some spinners with some paperback, romance and westerns and, and they're very popular. It's amazing how popular those books are. And we've just started a puzzle exchange and so that's why I shared that picture with you. With the COVID restrictions, so many people have been staying home and trying to find something to do. So they have this amassment of puzzles in their homes and they don't know what to do with them. So they've been bringing them in and trading them for others and it's been a really cool feature. Seen a lot of new faces through the door with that alone, so that's been really kind of fun. And Niqoah Library is the location for Manitoba Public Insurance Driver Testing. And we've been hosting them at the library using our meeting room for several years, many years before you and I even started. And since they were determined as a essential service through COVID, they continued using the library. When the library was closed, they used the meeting room and they follow all the provincial regulations. And they've been able to continue to offer driver testing, which is a really valuable thing for people so they can just get around. And one of the new things that we're starting to work on right now is an indigenous collection, a special section within the library to highlight those items in our collection and purchase some new items. So that we can develop a really wholesome indigenous collection in each of our branches, which is something we've only just started talking about and organizing. And so if anyone has any suggestions about things that should be included in these collections or anything else that should be included on our shelves, we're always open to ideas and suggestions. And especially with the indigenous collection, we'll be looking for input from the community online if anyone has anything to add.
Give it back to Danielle. Well, I conclude by a rather brief formal presentation. So I guess a couple of things I was going to add at the end is that for the library, as with everywhere else in the world, the last year and a half has certainly been challenging and has seen a lot of different approaches that we didn't anticipate that we would need to do. So like Debbie was talking about, we've been offering curbside pickups and deliveries and we've really made a lot of our policies more flexible. So allowing people to register for library cards remotely, doing a lot of phone and email assistance to help people, place books on hold or access our e-resources. So it's been, it's been a really interesting year. And I also wanted to acknowledge that I work with a volunteer board of trustees, of whom Jason is one of them. So each municipality that is a member of the WMRL has two board representatives on the library's board. So each municipality has a councillor representative, so Jason is that person for Niqoah, and then also a citizen representative. So and Mike already be aware of that because you meet with Jason regularly, but I just wanted to acknowledge the supportive board because I think that, I think everyone's been working hard to be flexible and supportive and try new approaches over the past year, so. And I also wanted to conclude by thanking all of you as the council of Niqoah for supporting the library. So I'm a little biased because I work at a library, but I do think libraries are very important to communities. And in Manitoba, they're heavily supported by municipalities as well as by the province. So we wouldn't be here if not for the support of our municipalities. So thank you so much for that. And yeah, and I guess just to conclude, if anyone has any questions or comments or anything you want to know or say, go for it.
Councilor Jaren, put the lights on.
You know, I just want to thank you guys for. Just want to thank you guys so much for coming and presenting. Usually I give a library report, so there goes my thunder. No, you know, it's really unique to see how libraries have had to evolve and adapt during COVID. And probably this would have happened eventually, but over much, much greater time. So the more electronic and digital versions of a library, it's really, really great what you guys are doing. And puzzles are expensive now, like twenty-five dollars a puzzle, so.
They are.
Yes, very neat, definitely, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Councilor Jaren?
Yeah, I was just curious, does the Westman Library, are they currently approaching or trying to engage more municipalities to be participating within the library? We do know that there are whole, you know, in our Ketchikan area, municipalities whose residents we know would love to come in and take part within our library in a larger way. But just, is that a function of your organization to go and try to attract new municipality participants? Should we miss?
Yeah, so I guess to give like a little bit of a backstory, I've been the director for two years. So I would say before I was the director, it wasn't on the board's or administration's radar, that I witnessed at least. I worked in, as a assistant library. When I became the director two years ago, then I worked with the board to develop this new strategic plan for the library. And that was something that came up in the strategic plan, is that there's many municipalities in rural Manitoba that have no library access. Can we reach out to some of them to invite them to join? Then a little pandemic happened, which sort of derailed a few of our specific goals. But in the last few months, I have started reaching out to neighboring municipalities. So actually, in March, I signed a reciprocal borrowing agreement with Cornwallis. The arm of Cornwallis that kind of surrounds Brandon, because they have, maybe it doesn't have to be Cornwallis, that use the Brandon Library. And then just last week, I reached out to the councils from some of the other surrounding municipalities, including Rosedale, which I'm imagining is, is one of the ones that uses it.
Who, then, you watch the most?
So as of today, I have not heard back from them, but I just sent them an opening salvo saying, would you be interested in talking about the possibility of library service? Which could mean a few things, like it could mean anything from, on the highest end, would be like they can have their own branch and completely join the region. Or what Cornwallis has done with the reciprocal borrowing agreement, it's just that their residents can sign up for library cards and then we invoice the municipality at the end of the year. So they're like, they're covering the cost for some, for their residents, but they're not full members. So yeah, if anyone has any thoughts or ideas of how to make that a more effective process, I'm certainly open to it. Because right now, I'm just doing it by phoning or emailing municipal offices and asking if they're interested, so.
Well, I think that's important because I think one of the things is when we see residents who aren't a member of the Westman Library.
Yeah.
And they feel it's a service is being deprived of them by not the library, but maybe a community. It's, it's nice to know that you are working on ways that maybe we can get their residents a part of that organization at some level. Or if we can get some, maybe even some greater participation from other surrounding municipalities, I think that's important. Because that also helps fund the library group as a, to a larger scale, which would be fantastic.
For sure.
Because I think it's a great organization and very important to our region.
Thank you, yeah, and I think that the municipality of, like I think the arm of Cornwallis has a similar kind of relationship with Brandon to what Rosedale has to Niqoah, that Cornwallis residents use facilities in Brandon all the time. And I think some Cornwallis residents, you know, they're very aware that they live in a rural municipality and don't pay into cities' taxes. And then I think others come in and are confused and aggravated and, you know, so anyway, yeah, thank you. Trying to make some headway.
Awesome.
Anybody else? I guess we're great.
Awesome, thank you so much for having us. Oh, yes, yes, yeah, we made that, we made you all thank you gifts of Debbie issued a library card for each of you. So I'm going to leave these with you and then, oh no, here's our summer reading club sticker there. So if you want to stop by and pick up your brand new library card on your way out, and then, and then you can go visit Debbie next week.
And they're all activated, so you can go home and log into the library and set up your account in the catalog and start ordering books straight away, so.
And just so you guys know, you have a very strong advocate here in Councilor Dunaado. He's a very enthusiastic supporter of the libraries and he brings us lots of information about the libraries, so yeah, you're very lucky to have him on your board.
That's wonderful, thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you all, yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, I guess we are going to move into council reports. Who has a council report?
Hey, we had our first in-person medical clinic meeting since October 2020. And the big highlight there, I guess we'll be renegotiating our lease with the doctors for a new domain. And I might have to learn how to assemble the UV therapy booth as our installer comes from Ontario, so I'm either that or I take them to my cabin for two weeks. We are quite pleased that they have already done some basements dug out at the CN property. And just to sort of clarify here, NACO is not doing the subdivision out where the Old Chicken Barn used to be. That is the Bray family doing that, however, I am more than willing to help in the subdivision process along with guidance from our CAO. We have learned a lot of information that needs to be done in the right order from our CN subdivision, so we'll be offering that to any and all people who would like to come in and do subdivisions.
Thank you, Mary. Does anybody else have a council report? Councilor Pado?
Recreation and economic development has a, just one item, I'm assuming over here, Jerry, if you're able to get in on that. Kids of Mud is the official youth cycling program of the Manitoba Cycling Association, administered by a group of participating clubs. Kids of Mud is a learn to ride and learn to race program for kids sixteen and younger, covering the fundamentals, learn to train and train to train stages of the long-term athletic development pathway. Through the help of certified coaches and other volunteers, riders will learn the basics of off-road cycling with an opportunity to challenge their skill and fitness in any of the MCA mountain bike races open to age category racers. Riders are registered with the Manitoba Cycling Association in one of these recognized youth cycling categories, under seventeen, under fifteen, under thirteen, under eleven, and under nine, based on their age as of December 31st of this year. Training typically takes place in the beginning or mid to late April and wrapping up at the end of June. Kids wishing to ride must have a helmet and it must be an approved cycling-specific helmet. They also need a mountain bike with handbrakes and gears and are able to ride their bike without training wheels. So I guess I love it. Training with Kids of Mud includes safety, braking, gears, hills, racing, which is optional, riding over small and large obstacles, trail riding, trail etiquette, and more. The Kids of Mud training program is run by volunteer, national coaching certificate, certificate, coaches in clubs located in Winnipeg, Portage River Prairie, Winkler, Steinback, McCrery, Swan River, Russell, Minnadosa, Dauphin, Stonewall, LePaw, and Niqoah. The Niqoah Kids of Mud program starts on Thursday, April 29th, weather pending, and it'll run on Thursday and Sunday evenings at 6:30 PM for one hour. We will run the program for eight weeks, with our last scheduled ride being Sunday, June 20th. In the event that there's been some weather cancellations, we'll do our best to make up the missed days. The requirements, you need. The requirements, you need a Niqoaw Kids of Mud registration, which is $40, and then MCA general membership, which is $60. A race license is only required if your child is interested in participating in the MCA sanctioned races. But there will not be any races sanctioned by the MCA for the 2021 season. You also need a mountain bike. All participants must have a mountain bike complete with handbrakes and gears. The bike must be in good and safe working order prior to each practice. Maintenance is the responsibility of the parent before the practice begins. This includes properly functioning brakes, gears, and a helmet that is properly fitted to the appy. COVID-19 rules limit the ability of coaches to help with any adjustments to rider gear at the present time. They need a helmet. Properly fitted cycling helmets are required. Check out the Niqoaw Kids of Mud Facebook page for a tutorial video, and I have that on my screen right here. And finally, parents who wish to ride along with them will also need to purchase a Manitoba Cycling Association license, which is $60 for the adult license, not raised for insurance reasons, and a proof of membership is required. So if anyone's interested in more information, if you simply go to the Niqoaw Kids of Mud right off the Facebook account there, there's more information there.
Thank you. Counselor Lachter, door. Okay. Anybody else have a council report? Counselor Jarrett?
Yes, April 15th, the Whitehead Watershed had a meeting. And that was to discuss the upcoming projects for the current season and also to reduce the budget for Whitehead Watershed in the region. Number of projects planned, they're still assessing some damage and that that occurred through last year's flood events. It's an ongoing project and it looks to be a very busy summer.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to department reports. Management of Operations, Tini.
Thank you. Never question. So it's with deeper grit and excitement that we announced Mr. Jack Falls is retiring. After 41 years of service with the town of Niqoaw, Jack has finally decided to hand his, his retirement notice. So somebody may notice, we posted a position already, he received his notice a couple of days ago. So we're very excited for Jack and his future endeavors. Hopefully he can spoil those grandkids and still come around and bug us. We've also issued our sidewalk tender. Streets evening is ongoing, weather pending, unfortunately it's a cold snap, we couldn't continue with that with plus zero, above zero weather for that. Spring cleanup, as I mentioned last council meeting, will stay there for the first Monday of May, so it's May 3rd, I believe. Some are stashed, but for the most part hired.
Doing great.
So unfortunately we did not notify those that were not hired, so it's just a mirror, there's just too many to start notifying. Today we issued a water boil advisory for a certain block of Mountain Avenue, taking a handle to the Mill Street. So the context is that one of the businesses had a water leak on the inside of their service line in the basement. So unfortunately the water shut off outside the building. Being 100-plus years old, that was non-functional, so we led us to have to turn the main off. Whenever we do a main turnoff, the management regulation states that we have to do a precautionary water advisory. So once pressure drops, this is an advisory just for that one single block. I'll take our water samples with my incoming days and then everything will be back to normal. So it's a precautionary note. So that's the short notice, unfortunately it had to be that one, the water started leaking real quick. Seal has been ordered for Zarker refuels, but we have to still remedy and dyke project that we constructed last year. So I'll wait for those to arrive and then once weather turns a little bit, we can get out there and start seeing what's out first of all.
Okay, well, I guess in regards to Jack Falls, obviously he's left a huge legacy. I mean, 41 years at the cemetery, I mean, that's remarkable what he's done over the years. I guess in terms of, I think we had this question asked before too from some other people who retired from the fire department. I mean, we are very much want to, to, you know, show our respect to these people with some type of celebration for their retirement somewhere down the road. But because of the pandemic, we just don't know when that's going to occur yet. We're hoping maybe this particular Christmas, maybe by that time things will be back to like relatively normal. But we certainly, we certainly want to move forward and show our respect for these people. So hopefully that'll occur sooner than later.
Yeah, we've got a few to celebrate now.
Yeah, I know, I'd say that. And we definitely haven't forgotten that. I don't know if anybody else had any other comments or questions?
I'll just follow up on a comment with Jack Falls. I mean, I personally want to thank him. I've known Jack now for just half of his time at the cemetery. 20 years I've been in the community. One of those indelible features of the community, when people think of beautiful Niqoaw, that that is the work that Jack has put there over the past 41 years. And I just don't think we can thank him enough for what he's meant to our community and what he has done. For us as a symbol of pride within the region even, it's just been fantastic. And I mean, Jack does so much more than that. I mean, when Koka Curl was coming, he was definitely involved there. He's been a, he's been a very positive horse within the town and he's definitely going to be missed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving forward. Colleen, we have a letter from the Minister of Municipal Relations.
So as you said, the Ministry of Municipal Relations regarding the Mobility Disadvantaged Transportation Program or otherwise known as the Handyback, is a one-time top-up grant. It's an additional plat grant of $10,000 that was deposited into our account recently because we are basically the holder of the funds that get transferred through from the Handyback. It's providing sponsoring municipalities to handyback transit services funded by the Mobility Disadvantaged Transportation Program. Manitowoc recognizes the impacts faced by individual Manitobans, municipalities, and nonprofit organizations due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. This top-up intends to support the provision of existing services and facilitate the transport of seniors and others with mobility issues to and from COVID-19 vaccination sites. There are specific parameters for the allocation of the funding. The grant is to be used to offset the per kilometer charge for providing transportation services to clients to and from COVID vaccination appointments outside their home community. Handy transit services are allowed to charge their usual fare to clients, but funding provided here is to support the waiving of the per kilometer charge for these trips. And secondly, to offset the cost and for the protective equipment acquisition and the sanitization of vehicles between trips. Please be aware of Manitowoc COVID-19 prevention order relative to the provision of these services as detailed in an attachment that was provided to us. Funding recipients will be asked to report on financial impacts on their operations due to COVID-19 and key outcomes as a result of the funding top-up as part of their 2021-22 year end reporting requirements. This information will be reflected in the reporting package sent to municipalities annually. So that, just in the attachment, a few notable items. Businesses providing critical essential services such as those providing transportation services may remain open, according to the direction of the Chief Provincial Public Health Officer. Municipal transportation services, taxis, limousines, and other vehicles for hire may operate if measures have been implemented to ensure that all passengers are able to maintain a reasonable separation from other persons in the vehicle. As a result, handy transit providers and other service providers are exempt from closure, but must adhere to the distance requirements between people, do the sanitization of vehicles and equipment, and also use your personal protective equipment. There are also restrictions in place regarding travel to northern Manitoba and inter-region travel. However, employees of critical businesses, government officials, and healthcare providers are exempt from these restrictions. So the $10,000 is given for a purpose for PPE and sanitization and ostening costs, basically in summary, to vaccination appointments outside your community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, we are going to move forward with adopting our 2021 financial plan. Is there any questions or comments before we move forward with that? Okay, if not, move by. Counselor Jarrett. Second by, Deputy Mary Headley. Be resolved that we hereby adopt a 2021 financial plan. All in favor? Okay, and then we are into the February financial statement. If we just have a chance to review that, and if we can move forward with a motion on that, please. Move by Counselor Dudo. Second by Deputy Mary Headley. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending February 20, 2021. All in favor? And we are also looking to approve the March 2021 financial statement. So we can move forward with a motion on that. Move by Counselor Parrott. Second by Counselor Pado. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending March 31st, 2021. All in favor? Okay, we are going back to the public hearing, so the variation application for Osborne-Susky. I think that was pretty straightforward. Nothing was being changed, or just everything was going to stay the same way. Is there any questions or any comments on that before we move forward? Okay, move by. Counselor Parrott. Second by Counselor Costin. Be resolved that we approve variation application B-02-2021 of Justin Osborne and Sherry Susky respecting lot 1, lot 4, Plan 6965, and Southwest 32-14-15 West as part of satisfying the conditions of subdivision 4437-21-8245 and allowing applicants to vary the front yard setback from the required 15 feet to a proposed 10.47 feet for the existing building on Lot 1, and a reduction of the front yard setback from the required 15 feet to a proposed 10.83 feet for the existing building on Lot 2. All in favor? Okay, and we are into the variation for Stone Cliff Builders. So I think we're probably going to have some discussion on this. So I don't think we had any concerns on the sizing of the building or the changes in the setback. I think the one question that we wanted to get clarification on was the parking. So I guess from my point of view, he may, he told us, we were told that their statistics are telling them that they're only using 50, or less than 50% of the lot, of parking available to the people that are living in it. So in that case, you've got 128 suites, he's saying, and he believes the most they would use is 66. And they're, what do they have at the end of the day, 110? 88, okay. The other option they said was they could do some, take out some green space. That wouldn't be my first choice. I think it's nice for, you know, people living in those suites that they can get outside when the weather's nice and have some green space available. I was hoping maybe there was a middle road where we could say to them, you know what, we can leave it the way it is right now with the variation, but if down the road we find that there are more cars and they expected or we expected that we could apply a variation to the parking. And I don't know if that's...
So it's quite hard then, so we move the existing and then we amend and move second amendment, the vote on the amendment, and then vote on it as amended?
So yes, technically the resolution is written in support of the application made by the applicant. So that's what's on the table for your debate. If you're not in agreement for one and all of those conditions, you would move an amendment, you would vote on the amendment, then you would vote on the amended resolution.
Okay, so I'll move the resolution as it is at this time?
To get it on the table, yes.
Okay, move back Counselor Parrott. Second by Deputy Mary Headley.
I'd like to put an amendment in.
Okay, so did we do that right now then, to Colleen?
I would maybe read it as it is now.
Okay. Be resolved that we approve conditional use variation application CU-B-02-2021 of Stone Cliff Builders, Davitri Schiller, Lilyfield Properties Inc. to allow the location of a rooming house within RM2 residential multi-use two zoning affecting lot 65, Plan 65638 at 35 Howden Street to allow for a reduction in the rear yard setback from the required 30 feet to proposed 18 feet and to reduce the overall parking requirements from a total of 128 required stalls to proposed 88 stalls.
So no worries moving an amendment. You need a second here too.
I'd like to move this amendment adding a bullet. Subject to the applicant agreeing to sacrifice the intended green space within the development to provide a total of 110 parking stalls, should it be necessary and/or secure sufficient off-site parking to the satisfaction of council to accommodate all required overflow parking.
Okay, can I get a second here on that? Counselor Costin, check. Okay, we have any discussion on that now? Does anyone have any opinion whether they...
Just, I like the amendment. I was just curious, how would somebody go about enforcing that? If there's a lot of additional cars overflowing, would it be like, you know, wait a minute, they'll be gone? Or are we gonna, how can we enforce that?
Okay, and I don't have the answer to that.
It should be written in the development agreement, as the resolution is part of it. And then that would come to the planning board, or that would come to the council.
So currently there is no development agreement involved with this development? What's your recommendation?
I like, I like the idea of adding a bullet into it or a condition. And I guess as far as, maybe that resolution would be registered on file in the planning district office. And if there is, if there is parking issues in the future, my office would give council the authority to enforce that condition. So typical enforcement fashion, notice would be given out that, you know, there's been complaints about parking. You either have so much time to control your parking or create extra space. If none of those conditions, or if none of those orders are complied with, eventually the order would come back to the town to, you could physically go in at that time and create, create the necessary parking and then costs can be applied to, to property taxes, yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Anybody else?
I guess maybe if I just want to add, I mean, if anybody's considering, so you have the options there. But if you just, if you just flat out reject the resolution, you're also objecting to the, to the proposed use, to the variations of the property, that type of stuff. So if there's any concerns on voting, be, just please be very clear that, you know, if you're voting a negative vote, you're voting negative to the proposal completed.
Well, first off, we're just voting on the amendment.
Okay, right, yes, okay, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move forward with that. Everybody in favor of the amendment? Okay, opposed, no body. Okay, so that passed. And then we're still voting on...
So now you're voting on the entire resolution including the other?
Okay, everybody in favor of that resolution? Okay, and then that passed. Okay, it's perfect. Okay, we are moving forward with some sales of property, Colleen, or Jeff, I don't know who's doing that, Colleen?
Just very quickly, there's two sales. The first one is going... The first one is going to be two particular lots, it'll be more than two residential two-year lots on the CN subdivision, and we offer for sale at the moment to Agcancy Builders. And the second one is to a fellow by the name of Ricardo Sandoval, who is purchasing one of those RT lots. So if you agree to sell those three lots tonight to those individuals, just so you know, of the 46 residential lots on the CN subdivision, we will only have one remaining for sale.
Wow, okay. Okay, Counselor Parrott excused himself for the first one, I believe, for conflict. So we will, if there's no questions or comments, we'll move forward with that. Move by Deputy Mary Headley. Second by Counselor Pado. Be resolved that we approve the sale of lot 1 and 2, Plan 65638 in Southwest 13-14-15 West in the amount of $45,000 per lot, $90,000 to Agcancy Builders, subject to the terms of our purchase and sales agreement. All in favor? And we will move forward with the second sale. Move by Counselor Pado. Second by Counselor Jarrett. Be resolved that we approve the sale of lot 8, Plan 65638 in Southwest 13-14-15 West in the amount of $45,000 to Ricardo Sandoval, subject to the terms of our purchase and sales agreement. All in favor? Okay, we are now into the bylaw for levy of taxes for 2021, first reading? Anything that you agree? that you agree?
No, you've already approved the financial plan as is, and now you are going to get first reading to the bylaw that basically takes the velries and imposes them into the bylaw. Once that gets done, it goes away for approval, and hopefully you'll be a second third reading in May.
Okay, perfect. We'll forward with that resolution, then. Move by. Councilman Dunaado. Second by. Deputy Mayor Headley. Be resolved that bylaw number 3206, that 21 being a bylaw of the town of Niqua, levy taxes for the year 2020 to provide a tax due date and to provide for any payment penalties by now, be now read for a first time. All in favor? Here. Okay, and we have come to the end of the meeting, except if anybody else has anything they want to add tonight before we adjourn. Okay, and I guess we will move forward with the German. Move by. Councilor Pando. Second by. Councilor Costin. Be resolved that the council of town Niqua do not adjourn this regularly in council at 8:05 PM. All in favor? Here.